Good evening. Welcome to the East Brandywine Township Board of Supervisors' regular session, Thursday, June 17th. Do we have any public comment for agenda items?
No. Okay. I'm sorry.
No, we had some questions and concerns we wanted to share. I don't know if this is the time to do it. I never mentioned one of these before.
So if you're in the actual agenda, then now you could. And if you have just questions pertaining to something unrelated to tonight's agenda, then that would be non-agenda at the end.
I had called and asked if we needed to be put on the agenda, and I was told that we could just speak openly at this meeting.
Yeah, so then I don't think they've penciled in any special time.
It would be Roman numeral 10 on your agenda.
Yep. But we'll keep an ear out.
Moving on to Minnesota, previous meetings, we have none. Treasury report and authorization to pay bills. So we just reviewed the Treasury report and then we authorized the payment of bills. So moved?
So moved.
I'll abstain from 176 and 27189.
276 and?
27189 and 176.
If I may, it would be appropriate to second the motion to adopt the financials as presented. And then, at the point that a vote is taken, at that point, Mr. Scribner can abstain from voting yea on those bills.
Okay. You just want to go ahead?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the Treasury report and authorize the payment of bills.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, with the exception of the said note.
Moving on to the Township Manager's Report, the Building Inspector's Report, and the East Brandywine Township Police Department's Report for 2021.
I'll make a motion to accept those reports.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to the Township Roadmaster's Report. Matt, how you doing?
Okay, thank you very much. On June 8th, the west end of East Brandywine Township got about four inches of rain within two hours. It's believed that the east end of the township received more rainfall than the west. Township Road Department went into service at 1700 hours, checking all the roads throughout the township. The major problem was road banks that had deposited mudstone and debris on the roadways. We found that most of the problems were located on state roads. We were in constant contact with the police department, communicating problem areas needing attention. We completed cleanup around 2000 hours. I'd like to thank the Road Department and the Police Department personnel for a job well done. Since that storm, there were a few washouts along the road, and stream banks where caused erosion, and we've placed riprap stone to stabilize the roadbanks. Recently, I met with Kyle Turner of Cedarville Engineering Group to discuss preparation of bid documents for the storm sewer repairs, replacement on Aspen Drive. We also discussed overlaying the road. We anticipate breaking this into two projects. Cedarville will provide a proposal to prepare bid specifications. The Road Department is continuing asphalt repairs on Township Road in anticipation of widening and overlay by NDG, the developer of the Hillendale Development. We expect to have the base repair completed by the end of this month. It's been difficult due to recent rainstorms and other work scheduled with the department. And lastly, the Road Department is requesting permission to advertise and sell the following equipment on municipal bid. It's a 2007 Jeep Cherokee with 99,250 miles, and I believe it's a former police chief vehicle. The 2010 X-Mark Laser XS Diesel with a 72-inch cut. This unit was replaced last year. We purchased another mower to replace that one. And a 72-inch, it's called a RDTH. It's a brush hog, rear discharge finishing mower. And this unit has very, had very limited use since we had purchased a 12-foot progressive mower. They're looking to advertise the sale with the board's permission.
Right, and it would need to, once there was an apparent high bidder for these objects, it would come back for the board to actually authorize the sale. So the motion, if you're inclined to make it, is to authorize the Roadmaster to advertise these items for sale.
Okay, I'll make a motion to permit the Roadmaster to advertise the vehicle and the two pieces of equipment.
And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matt.
East Brandywine Township Fire Company's report for June. How you doing, Joe?
Good evening, thank you. The East Brandywine Fire Company was busy in the month of May. We had 60 total incidents, 31 fire incidents, 29 medical. In East Brandywine Township, we had 13 fire incidents with 20 medical. You'll note that we had a $5,000 fire loss. There was a significant kitchen fire in the property in the park up at, off of Dilworth Road. If it wasn't for the quick response of the fire department, they had heavy smoke and fire in the kitchen when they arrived, and we had 26 volunteers on the scene maintaining the fire just in the kitchen. So it was a good job by the guys there. Again, I invite the supervisors to come down. The construction at the fire department is well underway. While it may not look like a lot from the outside right now, the inside of the fire department is completely gutted. The Township Inspector has worked very closely and very diligently with us to keep the project moving, so we thank him for that. Also of note, last Wednesday evening, the fire company held a retirement ceremony for Mr. ASA Skip Van Lu for 60 years of service in the fire department. And he's retiring as of June 19th as a driver with East Brandywine. And he's been our top responder for the last 10 years, and he's Matt Van Lu's father, and we had a nice ceremony for him. But he'll be missed.
I'm going to mention Greg's award too, or no, Colemeyer's?
Oh, thank you. Thanks. Also of note, our head of our QRS unit at East Brandywine Fire Company was named the EMT First Responder of the Year for Chester County Emergency Services at an awards banquet that the Chester County EMS Council held. So that was a nice accolade for Mr. Colemeyer for, he lives in the Apple Cross Development and is our top responder in the QRS.
And one more credit where it's due. I believe there was a vehicle rescue associated with the flood events that happened on June the 8th?
Yeah, there was, the fire department was quite busy during that time, just as the police department and the roads department. And one of the calls was for a vehicle rescue that we responded to and were able to help out the individuals that were involved.
Thank you. Moving on to old business, the update of the comprehensive plan project. Hey, I know Mike.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Michael Wagner. For you who don't know me, I am the manager for the ordinance task force and part of the steering committee for our new comprehensive plan. It's been 10 years since we've put together a comprehensive plan, and as a partnership with Chester County, we've gotten a grant funding to be able to move forward to update our comprehensive plan. So this is just a quick update to let you know where we are. We're just starting off the process. We had a meeting in May, end of May, to start off the task force for this. And with that, we were introduced to the project team, which is Brandywine Conservancy, working with Thomas Committed Associates, the county, and us, all working together to put together our comprehensive plan. The design team was Thomas Committed and Brandywine Conservancy. They'll put together the plan, they'll do all the data run, we'll do some of the collection, but then we're going to be administering that with Chester County, and their representative administering the grant for that. So just as a quick update, and Luke, you can back me up if I get this wrong, the online survey is ready to go. So what that means is we can get online right now and do our survey. So if anybody is computer savvy, could please get online, and there is a UL on our website which will link you to this. So it'll be an easy process to get to it, fill out the information, and then just send it back. Part of this also is, and this is for our older residents, we also are doing a mail-out. So we're going to be mailing out the survey to every resident. Roughly, we have 3100 residents in the township, and we hope that we'll get a great response from that. You get a return envelope with that, so really no cost to the township, well, resident per se, except for we're paying to have it mailed out. Well, we hope to get a great response on both portals if we can. So with that said, I'm asking the board supervisors to spread the word. Spread the word to the township residents, whoever you see. When you're in the grocery store, if you're in the Rite Aid or wherever you are, tell people to go. Go to the website, fill it out. Why? We need input from the residents so we can move forward for our next 10 years. We need to know where you guys want to be, so when we put this plan together, we're all on the same page as the township moves forward. That's all I got for you tonight.
Is that something, Luke, we could put on the outdoor bulletin board?
Yes, it'll be on the electronic bulletin board, and hopefully, more and more people who get to see it will spread the word. We get a lot of people that come up and down 322. Hopefully, with spreading the word, we'll be able to move forward. All of our committees too have been asked to spread the word also. That way, we get more information. The more information we get, the better off we can move forward, and the more voices we hear. More voices we hear now, the less we hear at board supervisors' meeting when people don't know what's going on.
And the deadline is when?
The deadline will be July 16th to get everything in. Now, we will let that move a little bit forward, or a little bit past that, but the data has shown that usually, most people will respond to a survey within two to three weeks of it coming out. And then with summer coming, we don't expect that much towards the end. The majority of the data that's going to be collected after that will be stakeholders' meetings and data collection from Brandywine Conservancy and the Thomas Committed Associates as they put together the data that we can then review. We'll be coming back to you guys through the task force to show you where we are and where we're going, and to get feedback. Because obviously, we're going to have public meetings, and then we're also going to have data showing too, where we can show where we're going, mapping and so on and so forth as we move forward with the project. We want to be as transparent as possible so people know what's going on, and we also know that as we move forward with our comprehensive plan, we might have to adjust our ordinance to be able to now go forward with the direction that the township wants to go.
Thank you.
So I leave that. Any questions? Perfect, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mark. Now let's move on to new business, permission to advertise purchase of plants, Phase 2 of Bonsville Mill Garden Project. Luke?
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. In your packet this evening is a printout from a spreadsheet that shows the plants that are being contemplated for purchase for Phase 2 of the Bonsville Mill Garden Project. This is a partially grant-funded project that involved, in Phase 1, the breakup of the concrete pad. Earlier this month, the board gave its recommendation to buy soils to fill in using a CoStarz vendor, and now we are contemplating picking a vendor to sell us the plants to go in the garden. There is no CoStarz vendor who would be able to provide this, so we're talking about a sealed advertised bid. The complete sealed advertised bid package is not yet complete, although we do have a precedent of the board authorizing staff and volunteers to advertise bid specs before the final copy is available. So in the interest of expediting this process this evening, I'd like you to consider authorizing staff to advertise for the purchase of the plants shown in your packet. It is a budgeted item. The grant budget was $58,000 for plants. At this time, the committee, based on just market value and their plant inventory, anticipates that the cost would be about $51,000, and this board will have the opportunity to choose the apparent low bidder or reject all bidders at a later date.
Questions, yeah, anything? You okay, Tom?
Yep.
I'll make a motion then to allow staff to advertise for the purchase of these plants.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to subdivision and zoning applications. The board's consideration for final plan approval of the application of Diane Hamel's Trust. How you doing, Colin?
Good evening. My name is Mike Cowan with Commonwealth Engineers, representing the Diane Hamel Trust subdivision. Can give you a quick overview of the project if you'd like. We're taking properties that the Diane Hamel Trust owns to subdivide them into, I guess, for estate planning purposes. No development is currently going to be done on the properties. This is the existing way the lots lay out right now. You have one lot that is in actually West Brandywine and East Brandywine here, with two different tax parcel numbers. A third lot here, which is entirely in East Brandywine, and then a third one that's in Calm, or, I'm sorry, a fourth one that's in Calm. And what we'd like to do is reconfigure them. This piece will then totally be in West Brandywine. You won't have the two, and then two in East Brandywine, combining with the pieces in Calm, or the piece in Calm. We've been to the planning commission, got their recommendation for final approval to come before you guys were, to consider that as well. We've had the township engineer's review letter, the last one dated May 27th, 2021, and there's really no, that I can see is any items on there that we can't get cleaned up and to the township engineers' satisfaction. So ultimately, we'd like to ask for your approval of the final approval of the subdivision plan.
And what, Luke, do you have the response from the planning commission?
Yes.
Is it this short excerpt?
Yeah. Standby here, I'm also, I'm also operating the recording controls here.
Okay.
So included in your packet is the exception of the planning commission's minutes. Additionally, in your packet is a proposed or a draft letter from the township solicitor, and draft language of a motion if the board is prepared to make a motion granting final plan approval, conditional final plan approval. And for anyone, I guess, anybody either watching this after the fact or in the audience, our solicitor is joining us by phone and can hear us. Although he can't speak because we've got the wrong program selected. Let me switch back real quick, like rocket science. Mark, are you still there?
I absolutely am.
All right.
So Mike, most of the items on Panoni Review Letter have been addressed, but not all of them?
Yes, I believe it is.
But you have no issues with the ones that you have not completed yet?
Correct.
And they will be completed by, is there a date or anything?
One item that we are currently, that's still pending is the sewer module.
Okay.
And that one does have a little lengthy time, so to give you an actual date when all of them will be, would be hard.
Okay.
But I don't see any problem with getting that approval or exemption.
Okay.
So I just don't have an exact date to give you, unfortunately.
This is one read, you guys both okay? Okay. In its entirety?
Yeah.
Yep. I move that the board of supervisors grant final plan approval for 1541 Fisherville Road subject to the following conditions. First, compliance with all the comments in the Panoni Review Letter dated May 27th, 2021, to the satisfaction of township. Secondly, the applicant shall pay and reimburse all fees and costs relating to this project, including all outstanding bills from the township's professional consultants. And lastly, applicant shall comply with all other applicable township, county, state, and federal rules, regulation, codes, ordinances, and statutes, and obtain all required permits from outside agencies. You okay?
Yes.
Yep. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to public comment on non-agenda items.
Absolutely. Judge Wapner, remember, handed to the bail.
Thank you.
Just have a little five-minute presentation.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Lauren Rodolfo. This is Michelle Carrigan and Kate Palladino. And we're here to propose updates being made at the East Brandywine Community Park to make the playground more inclusive and family-friendly. Each one of us has a son with special needs, and what we've noticed is that there aren't any areas or playgrounds around here where we can take them to play. And as we all know, am I standing in a bad spot for this? I don't want to trigger it.
It's an area mic, so it's super sensitive, but you can just take a step back and it'll work just fine.
Okay. So as we all know, East Brandywine Township has had a massive population explosion recently. And the park itself was started in 1990, and since then, there's been a 65% population increase in the township community. So what we'd like to do is have a playground built there that reflects the population. It might surprise you to know that about 1 in 5 of the kids in Downey-Tonerya School District have special needs. They all have IEPs, which are individual education plans. And those are all specialized plans for kids with special needs. And what I've included in here is a chart of the breakdown of the different kinds of special needs the children have. And so you can see things like autism spectrum, my child has cerebral palsy, our kids all have physical disabilities, but there's also, you know, sensory disorders and things like that. So right now, in the education community, inclusion is a hot topic. Inclusion is, what it is, is the joining of typical students with special needs students in the classroom and in play. And the reason why it's so hot right now is because there's been a lot of research that's been done that shows that it's very beneficial for typical and special needs kids to be in that sort of environment. They learn empathy and compassion. The typical kids actually sort of rise up and develop a lot of leadership skills, and in some kids with autism, it's shown it's been helpful with some symptoms of their autism. So what we're proposing is the development of a fully-inclusive playground area somewhere in that park. So when we talk about these inclusive playgrounds, we're talking about playgrounds that are good for the typical and the special needs kids. They're not just special needs programs or playgrounds. These are enormous playgrounds that have really cool equipment. I gave a couple of brochures up there and marked them with some paper clips, and you can see. I mean, these are like modern playgrounds with shading and really cool structures for all the kids to climb on and have fun. And what we did was we did some research and found inclusive playgrounds in our region, and we've highlighted about nine of them here. There's like Wilson Farm in Chesterbrook, PA, Lukens Park in Horsom. There's a whole bunch of them.
Is there one that's like a model, like it's an absolute model playground or no? Did you come across?
There are, there are. I don't know, guys, what do you think would be a model?
There's some websites that cover a lot of different playgrounds that would be models. Not all are local to PA, but.
Aston Community Park is a really good one. And I know that the Haverford Park is as well. And the different parks in REC right now, they're, actually, I was reading the report, they have a really cool, they're trying to push through a plan for, they were going to be doing it this year to start their own, another inclusive playground. They already have one, and they're going to be sort of like stepping it up a notch. And that looks, their equipment looks really interesting too, really fun. But, so, you know, inclusive playgrounds have a few key components. One is safety surfacing. It's like a poured rubber, which is a good surface for kids in wheelchairs, or moms pushing strollers, or parents pushing strollers. And inclusive play activities, things like accessible swings, ramps onto structures, physical sensory and social activities. There's shading in all of these parks and playgrounds. Usually, there's some kind of perimeter fencing and accessible pathways to the playground. So what I've done here is included some photographs of some of the structures that are there right now. This is the playground that's near the Allison Pavilion. It's pretty bare bones. You can see the path there is what leads you to the playground. It's kind of overgrown. It would be tough to manage with a wheelchair or with a stroller. And the other structures there, I'm guessing are probably from maybe the 1990s, about 30 years ago. So it would be great, and what we're proposing is to upgrade that area or the other area. There's another playground area as well. I mean, I assume Parks and Rec, you know, would dictate that. But we're proposing that we build up that area to make it inclusive for everybody, for all the kids. I mean, if you think 1 in 5 of them have special needs, and their typical siblings want to play with them too, and then all their typical friends, it's for everybody. So what we also did is we looked up some of the funding costs of these kind of playgrounds. And there are examples on the next page. There's, the Oxford Memorial Park was about $150,000. The city donated some, they got some state grants. There are a bunch of examples here. And what we found in our research is that this is very doable. Inclusion is a really hot topic right now. Everybody sees the value in it, and there are a lot of federal, state, and private grants available for these sort of projects. And there's also, you know, fundraising efforts too that could help fund this sort of a thing. So what we did was we put down a list in the handout of companies that also help find different funding streams for these kind of projects. And, yeah. In conclusion, I just want to say, my family moved here five years ago. We love East Brandywine Township and the park. We go there several days a week because my older son is in the EBYA Youth Athletics Program. So we're constantly there, we're always seeing neighbors, we're always seeing friends. It is a hub of our community. And so we would just love to be able to elevate the playgrounds to meet the needs of all the kids in the community. Thanks.
Question for you.
Yes.
How do you assess our park right now in terms of being able to give special needs
And inclusive play activities, things like accessible swings, ramps onto structures, physical sensory and social activities. There's shading in all of these parks and playgrounds. Usually, there's some kind of perimeter fencing and accessible pathways to the playground. So what I've done here is included some photographs of some of the structures that are there right now. This is the playground that's near the Allison Pavilion. It's pretty bare bones. You can see the path there is what leads you to the playground. It's kind of overgrown. It would be tough to manage with a wheelchair or with a stroller. And the other, the other structures there, I'm guessing are probably from maybe the 1990s, about 30 years ago. So it would be great, and what we're proposing is to upgrade that area or the other area. There's another playground area as well. I mean, I assume Parks and Rec, you know, would dictate that. But we're proposing that we build up that area to make it inclusive for everybody, for all the kids. I mean, if you think 1 in 5 of them have special needs, and their typical siblings want to play with them, too, and then all their typical friends, it's for everybody. So what we also did is we looked up some of the funding costs of these kind of playgrounds. And there are examples on the next page. There's the Oxford Memorial Park was about $150,000. The city donated some, they got some state grants. There are a bunch of examples here. And what we found in our research is that this is very doable. Inclusion is a really hot topic right now. Everybody sees the value in it. And there are a lot of federal, state, and private grants available for these sort of projects. And there's also, you know, fundraising efforts, too, that could help fund this sort of a thing. So what we did was we put down a list in the handout of companies that also help find different funding streams for these kind of projects. And, yeah. In conclusion, I just want to say, my family moved here five years ago. We love East Brandywine Township and the park. We go there several days a week because my older son is in the EBYA Youth Athletics Program. So we're constantly there, we're always seeing neighbors, we're always seeing friends. It is a hub of our community. And so we would just love to be able to elevate the playgrounds to meet the needs of all the kids in the community. Thanks.
Question for you. How do you assess our park right now in terms of being able to give special needs kids something to do? Is it really poor? Is it fair? How do you assess it now? If a special need goes up to our park now? Is there, is there anything? Or is there some things that they can?
Well, what do you think, Kate?
For my son personally, there's nothing he can do there. I mean, he just sits there and watches his brother play. But I would love for them to be able to play together.
For my son as well. He's in a wheelchair. And so, as of now, there, there's no equipment. And even, like, we go to see, watch my older son play baseball. Even getting to the field is challenging. So, yeah, I wouldn't say that it's terribly accessible right now.
Okay. So I was, just, excuse me. A few weeks ago, we had this discussion, and we were trying to figure out the best way to get you guys, the forum to get you guys in, and it was to the Board of Supervisors. I think through the Board of Supervisors, we can also get Parks and Rec onboard as well. But also, I think, Luke, if you could assist with looking into what grants we do have that are available for something of this nature. The third, well, first and foremost, it's a necessity, it has to happen. I mean, you know, just, you know, we're so far behind in our times, it's not even funny. Inclusion is everything, and as you said, even if you take one of the three groups that's here right now and says, "My son can't do anything," maybe there's one thing my son can do, or, you know, it's terrible. The third thing is, I was thinking, is there options like GoFundMe where a group can set up something? We could set something up on the township website and say, "Looking for donations because we want to do increased areas in the park." I'm just thinking of not just hitting it one little bit at a time, but hitting it at everything at once. Maybe we'll get a lot further.
Okay.
Do you know of any groups that have set up anything like this, GoFundMe for something like this?
I don't know GoFundMe, but I do know that, like, on the last page, we mentioned a bunch of companies there. They happen to be the ones who make the equipment, the special needs equipment. But there are fundraisers that are sort of...
I don't want to put you guys out into, you know, I was thinking something simple on a webpage, you know, to get it out there, but again, on our website, on our, you know, with our grant applications, anything that we can do, obviously, but if there was an easy, I'm not saying go out and sell cookies and, you know what I mean?
Right, right.
And then we personally make a GoFundMe, is that what you're asking?
I was just wondering, I mean...
What if Park and Rec, Park and Rec has a couple of summer programs coming up with the movies in the park and whatnot. What if they gave that a flyer announcing that we're going to try to do a project in the park? And maybe fundraise that way, or they could, you know, people could just mail it in, or they could take collections of the park and then put it into the foundation or whatnot? Maybe specifically set aside.
I think we should also include in the mile marker, deadline's July 15th for the fall, so we could have articles, you know, put in, every resident gets it.
Okay, that'd be great.
Have fundraising options by then, so we have until July 15th to really get something organized for that. Maybe we could reach out, get your information, we could...
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I don't want to cut off anybody's presentation, but I have a few remarks. All right, thank you. I'm gonna, I have projected on the screen a map of the community park, and I see you found a very similar map, and the...
Oh, it's the last handout, yeah.
Yeah. You're indicating the aging equipment near the Allison Pavilion at the north end of the park. There is a reason why that particular playground facility has been neglected, and that is because that is the proposed location of a new bathroom. And Parks and Recreation has been doing fundraising for many years in order to purchase a bathroom at the north end of the park, and we're in the process of so doing. So a lot of the equipment that you pictured in your package will be replaced. That said, there is an opportunity as it relates to funding, and as the board has been discussing, my report this evening was accepted as part of a consent agenda. But one of the items on my report is that the registration for the 2021 golf outing is out. And I want to just draw the board and your attention to the fact that that event is a fundraiser to replace playground equipment. And so, I think this is the world's most perfect timing. The playground equipment Parks and Rec is contemplating replaces is actually the more modern set on the south end.
Okay, I do know that area, that's where we, my son plays baseball most of the time. The only thing that I do request that in the inclusion, that makes it an inclusive playground, is the flooring is really important, that it's this sort of poured rubber type. It's a safety type of flooring. It allows for people in wheelchairs to go onto it. And, you know, strollers, too. But, so that's not per se equipment, but that is an important component that I hope we'd be able to put into the plan.
I think that once, you know, once the fundraiser is complete, that with meetings with the Park and Rec, you know, you will be able to have input as well, every resident to be able to see what kind of design we want. And that's, you know, the starting spot, in my opinion, just to be able to kind of develop what's going to be a, you know, a park that everyone can use and play together.
Okay. So there's going to be sort of the fundraising for the equipment, you're saying? And then, community discussion about how, what type of equipment?
Well, I think you guys have to be a part of the, yeah, because...
We would love to be.
Honestly, trying, yeah, trying to get, I mean, it's just a guessing game on what's the best equipment. And, you know, you guys certainly have done your rea, I mean...
We have a lot of ideas.
Has the school put this type of equipment in?
Actually, you know, East Ward just updated their playground. I mean, I think just a few weeks ago, they put in an inclusive playground in their school.
We could ask the school to district general fund for cash.
Okay. Yeah, that's great.
But I think it's important to have, like I said, hitting it from every approach possible is the best way.
Yeah, and as far as the fundraising goes, we'd love to be part of that as well.
So, Luke, what would the, what would the grant application process, would that be you or would that be Parks and Rec, or would that be Matt? How would that, to look and see if there are any grants?
I think the answer is all of the above. Let's, if I could just kind of rewind a little bit more on private fundraising and public-private partnerships to build facilities in the park. Earlier, I referenced the restroom. The restroom, when it is constructed, will be partially funded from the township's fee in lieu of recreation, partially funded through private fundraising done by the Parks and Recreation Committee, and partially funded by East Brandywine Youth Athletics, which has asked that this same structure have some storage for their equipment. And so they've got some skin in this game as well. So that's an example of, of an improvement in the park that was done with partnership of multiple parties. So I'm confident it can be done. I think the most important detail about this conversation is if, if left to its own devices and the Parks Recreation continues to fundraise and gets to the point where they can purchase this equipment, I am confident they will be interested in making sure that that equipment is inclusive. However, the timeline will be longer if it's not leveraged with some other source of funding. So I think, in addition to grant funding, there's also other township funds that could be used for this purpose. So I think what staff would be looking for is some direction about, we've mentioned two pools of funds, grants, and we've mentioned...
Corporations.
We've mentioned private fundraising. Should the, should staff in writing a 2022 budget also anticipate using taxpayer money in part to fund these improvements?
Yeah, I mean, I'm of the mindset, I mean, we have nothing. And that's, that's where I'm standing here right now, looking at it, saying, if nothing else, we need to help, we need to be the, you know, the burden of the cost of this. If we can, grants would be my second op, you know, obviously. But if the grants aren't there, then yeah, I mean, we start baby steps and work our way up and do a couple pieces of equipment each, every year.
I'm kicking myself. I left a very important funder out of the bathroom project, and that is the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, DCNR, which has a C2P2 grant, which is paying 50% of the cost, so it's quite substantial.
Right. If they're willing to pay for a bathroom, I'm sure.
I think that's the same grant that's funding the Tridifern one as well.
I don't know what the abbreviation is, but it's C2P2?
Yeah, C2P2. And then they're also using the GTRP, the Greenways Trails and Recreation Program from the DCED. I mean, it's a lot of acronyms, but...
But see, these...
But they match, they do like a 50% match.
Yeah, and these are out there, you know, so it's like, if I'm not paying attention to the details, you lose out on a lot of that stuff. So it's good to know, and there's probably others out there as well right now that we just have to do some research on.
And may I also say that individual pieces of equipment, there are families who like to donate, or not donate, because it's not used equipment, but like purchase or fund a piece of equipment for a playground. Like over in Kerr Park, they have, you can see, pieces of equipment that say, like, donated by the family of so-and-so. So that's private funding, but I do believe there's a good number of families who'd be willing to do that, too, or be interested in it. So...
Yeah, well, thank you guys very much.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, I just want to say something. This, to me, isn't this a Parks and Recreation Committee would spearhead this project? You got to get, before you can ask for corporations, private, or grants, you've got to have a project and idea. So we've got, they've got, you know, families, the committee, et cetera, put together what they'd like to happen, so we know what a cost value is.
Yep. So that's exactly what I was thinking. I was thinking maybe the next step would be between Matt and Luke, if you guys could spearhead this with Parks and Rec and say, first of all, we don't want to miss the opportunity to get this involved in the inclusion for your proceeds of the golf outing. But second of all, you know, maybe set them up with the group here to try and, you know, figure out so that we're not all guessing aimlessly on what kind of equipment would be good to use.
Right. May I ask if members of the board are not inclined to take the catalog materials home with them? Can we leave at least one copy for me to give to the chairman of Parks and Recreation?
Two sets, I think, two sets, yeah.
Can we?
Sure, absolutely.
Do you want one? Why don't you guys keep one, so if you're talking with Luke, you know what he's talking about?
Sure.
You know what I mean? And then Luke can...
We can request these, we can get a copy of these.
And there are also some, I mean, this is a company from Tennessee, but there are local, there's one...
Can you get those to Luke, and then Luke has a copy if they're talking?
Yeah. We should also have it included in our comprehensive plan update, because it's obviously going to be talking about our park system, so we can...
And, yeah, and also, we were just talking about that survey. Did you hear Michael Waggonage?
I did see that, yeah.
Could you guys all pepper that on that website as well for your inclusion? That would be awesome, because it builds it up. Thank you guys very much.
I got one last thing. I, you know, based on what you tell me, one out of five families have a special needs kid in East Brandywine, right? The statistics. I would like to highlight that fact, you know, and this playground, Mile Marker, we just got an email today that says the deadline for the next mile marker for giving topics to it. If you, if one of you would give us your name and the contact, so we have one contact, and if you guys agree, I'd like Diane Sweeney to kind of put together an article just saying this, and that the township is starting to look into things that can help families like yourselves. So just give us a name and a, before the end of the meeting. Do we have it? Who wants to be the contact?
We'll do a copy of you guys if you want.
Yeah, yeah, and I have her contact, so, yeah. I'll pass it on, I'll pass it on.
And the next Parks and Recreation Committee meeting is in the park on July 5th at 7:00 PM. So it's actually out in the park. Yeah, I'll be delivering this to them then. All right, thank you.
Lauren.
Lauren, okay.
And Michelle.
And then Kate, okay.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks, guys.
I don't see any other comments on non-agenda.
I would expect that there's probably...
I'm joking.
I don't, I know, I think I know what these comments are. About the Hopewell Road residents?
Yeah.
Yes. We had, after you had stopped in last week, if you want me to just tell you this, too, then you can...
Yeah, I would, yeah, go ahead.
You know, I guess Matt McElain from Pinoni has stopped in to speak with you.
He did.
And he's, he found that the runoff's coming from the site behind lots 153 and through 158. The past six months, sediment trap in this area was filled and the lot construction started. He's scheduled to meet with Andrew Devanzo on site tomorrow to look at the operation of Basin 1, which drains to the backyards of 1151 Hopewell, and discuss possibly creating a swell behind lots 152 to 158 to divert the flow to Basin 3, rather than you having to have that failed little section. Also, there's some inlets on Nicole's middle road that look like they were blocked as a reserve charging. So I think once excessive flow is coming from the, that basin that wasn't, that sediment trap's filled up.
I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time hearing you.
The sediment, the runoff was coming from the failed basin from the sediment trap being clogged. So now, now that we're aware from a lot of the complaints, it finally got to the bottom of it. I think we'll keep you in the loop, I have your phone numbers.
I think that was our concern, is that we've all come to, like, come and talked about it, but we've never had any feedback from it. So we're not sure. I know, I mean, obviously, June 8th was like totally extreme rain, but this has been multiple times of it happening. And when it breached in 2018, and then they fixed it, and we continue to have concerns about it. And now they're building on, up on the hillside, and so the water's coming from a different area. And I know that we're all seeing the effects of that. So I guess just maybe not having the feedback is, we're not sure, you know, we've had issues since 2018, and we don't really know where we're going with it.
Sure, I mean, this email was from June 9th, right, the day of the storm? We're doing all of the, we'd asked them to go up there to check that out, because my ankle was, I couldn't. So, but I can be, I could be your point contact and make sure that this gets resolved for you.
Mr. Chairman, if I can just have a point of order, for the purposes of the minutes, can I get an introduction to everybody and a street address where you reside?
I'm Patty and Todd, that says Todd Rider. We're on 1151 Hopewell, and we've been there since 2000.
Thank you.
And I am Graham Baird, and I live at 1173 Hopewell with my family, Danine Baird, and our two children, Wesley and Arwin. And we just found out from the Ridingers that there are problems with runoff throughout. I just figured, well, it's one of those rainy years. We've had water in our basement, and we've had, my driveway has been destroyed by the runoff. There is sediment coming down from the hill, three inches of water next to the Herring's home. It's just, it's, it's, it's totally out of control. And there's, and there's sediment going directly into the storm drain right by, right next to my property at Hopewell Road. And that goes directly into East Brandywine River. I live maybe, I don't know, 200 yards from the river. It's going directly in, and there are major, major problems. And I think not only is the fact that the breach or the clog, they were talking, that has caused that, that settling pond to overflow. I think that the other problem is that they are building onto compacted dirt without silt fences. And this has been a repeated problem. I've been up on the hill when that project was starting, and they, they were digging trenches for their septic to drain. I live right below them. That's going directly into my well, that's going into the Herring's well, that's going into the Aliva's well. Mr. Haas had his pond destroyed, and all of his water, his aquatic life swept out. So this is an ongoing problem. They are very poor neighbors, in my, in my opinion. And we need the township, please, to enforce the plans that they said they were going to do, the precautions that they said they were going to do. We need you guys to please enforce them immediately.
So Chester County Conservation District, they've been out with this complaint?
No, the particular site visit was Matt McElain from Pinoni.
That's where, that's where not only is it a slap to the wrist, it's fines, it's the whole nine yards. So I can tell you, for the smallest amount of runoff, I've seen them give fines out. So for this, this seems like it's much more substantial.
I have, I have video, I have, we have it all, like, just over the years of just the water runoff and how it's running into the pond and into our stream. And we don't, we were saying, there's not even any minnows, anything in the creeks anymore.
So I'm assuming a complaint was filed with CCCD?
That's the next step after they meet.
All right, because I think that complaint, and you guys can file the complaint, by the way. It doesn't have to be the township only. Everyone, every individual that files a complaint with them, they have to follow up on it. And then they'll send you a copy. That's the Chester County Conservation District. And I think that that's important, because if... Um, and I think that that's important because if they're getting out there now, this is already three, four or five days after the fact. I, it's gotta be quick.
Well, I can tell you that that.
In addition to that, I just wanna make note, um, last night, well, in addition to the fact that we can't even use our backyard, um, my kids can't even go outside because we, it's, the water is ridiculous in our backyard. We have standing water in it. Uh, but in addition to that, we couldn't even be outside last night because the sewage treatment plant smells so bad. It's just periodically, but we had our windows open and I came in the house and my house smelled, outside smelled. We had people over and they were like, "Oh, my gosh, can we go inside?" We went inside and it smelled just as bad. Um, that is totally unacceptable. I can't, I mean, we can't use our backyard and now it stinks.
Yeah, I can, I imagine.
We're, we're right behind the, the sewage treatment plant. So when we're, when we're out on the deck, you know, with southwest winds, it's coming right to us. And we had two people over last night like, "Boy, this really stinks." And it's just, this day and age, it's twenty twenty-one, you really, we shouldn't have to be smelling it, right? I mean, isn't there technology to, it should be clear and clean?
Yeah, Apple Cross uses their affluent to treat their golf course. So, so, I mean, you know, it's actually been sprayed by sprinklers and there's no smell up there. I mean, we drive by that daily.
Yeah, so something's gotta be looked into that too. We're, we're just trying to voice our opinions and we're, like you said, we're, we, we, it's sort of like not good neighbors and we're getting fed up.
Sure, no, I understand it completely. I appreciate your, guys, taking your time to come in here and, again, uh, less, two weeks ago. So, but I do think that, that sediment trap that was being filled in for the last six months, you know, something that was, just occurred as far as us finding out. And I think the developer actually didn't know it either. Um, so now that that's, I think that's gonna solve a lot of your problems right there.
But we can get updates on what they're doing to fix the problem?
Yes, I mean, how, I mean, basically I could, I could get your email address and we could just, we could email you as progress that, just to kind of have you guys copied on the correspondence so you're kind of aware, um, if that's something you guys would like.
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay. We just have to make sure we're not to have to do a write-to-no request or anything out. Like you might have filled out a write-to-no request, you know, just to be able to do it, like, to have the normal process. And then we just give you the documents, you know, that, all the correspondence that way as well.
Do we have to fill that out, you're saying?
I will have to check with our solicitor. But, um, well, is there, do we have any of your, I have your phone numbers, but is there any email addresses? Maybe we could write them down?
We should just give them a piece of paper and have them cop, copy, give them a blank piece of paper and have them copy name, email.
Address, the email address, phone number.
Phone number, if you wouldn't mind.
Here, let's write it on.
Let's give them a copy of what we drafted and they can have our emails.
Do that as well, okay.
We sort of summarize some of the, all of us, they're just rough stuff.
Sure, sure. You don't have to apologize for coming out either.
So you're saying, Kyle, that they should immediately start, start the complaint? They'll shut the project down. Now, is this an online, can they complain online or does it have to be?
It has to be, it has to be, uh. I think you have to call in the complaint, but it can also be through, probably through, uh, through email as well, but.
They're aware of it.
But they, each home, each homeowner should do that right now, right?
Well, they're aware of it now.
Oh, they're aware of it?
That's, that's who, um.
Oh, they are aware of it?
Yes, I don't think that I would actually lodge a complaint yet because if they are aware of it, they're trying to work together with the developer to fix that problem.
So they are aware.
Yes. So I don't know if I would actually recommend just, you know, everyone doing it right now. But I would say, you know, obviously, in a timely manner, you know, if, that's when, you know, but we'll keep you in the loop for, for certain. And now that we're all aware and, you know.
So they're aware of the problem, not the individual homeowners affected?
They knew, they, they just found out the actual, all of the overflow going down the hill was because of the failed sediment trap.
Okay.
So, so, uh, here's my only issue with that. My only issue with that is if they say it's flowing down Hopewell Road, it's, it's, I, I, I disagree. I think everybody here needs to file a complaint with Chester County Conservation District. And the reason why is because that gets everybody covered. Wouldn't you be upset if all of a sudden they take care of three down there and they didn't do the three over here?
I'm not telling you shit.
No, I know, I know.
I'm just saying, as, as, I'm just saying, if, I don't think that I would.
I agree, file something, file something. Even if they have it, file something.
And, and every time a complaint is filed by one of you, it goes to the Conservation District, um, agent and then that agent has to address that with the, so, so it doesn't matter if it's, if, everybody's property's gonna have a different problem. You know, I heard a pond was overflowed, I heard standing water in somebody else's yard.
Flooded basement.
Yeah, so, so it, it covers all bases and the Conservation District, he'll be, he'll be there. The agent's gonna be there anyway. Let them hit everybody's property the same day.
This is the, uh, is this what the, is this your base, your notice you wanna do? Okay, great. We'll go ahead and, um, I'll scan these and we can.
Right.